Commissioner Zubor, would you call the role, please?
Sir, Commissioner Acharya.
President.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Egenberger is absent. Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Graham Hudek. Commissioner Green.
I am here.
Chairman Green. Commissioner O'Conne is absent. Commissioner Perkins is absent. And Commissioner Zubor is here.
And we have our community planner Jeff Goulet. And welcome to everyone here. And welcome to the people that will ultimately watch at home. We have an agenda tonight of four items, I believe. That's right, four items. One is a public hearing and the rest are site plans. But before we get to that, let's talk about March's meeting. March 4th, we had a meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes from the March 4th meeting?
So moved.
Support.
We've got a motion to accept March 4th's meeting minutes from Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion? By voice vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We have, again, an agenda of four items. Anything late from staff?
No, sir.
Anything from the commission to talk about, to add? No? Hearing none, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to accept the agenda from Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Our first agenda item tonight is a public hearing. And again, public hearings are just that. We invite the public to comment, ask questions, et cetera, on the given project. And we have about a minute and a half or so to make comments. We do ask that you fill out your form if you do get up there so that we know who you are. And then when you get up there, state your name and address. Our first agenda item is the Haydens multi-tenant special land use, where we're considering this special land use for property which is located south of Ford and east of Lots. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes, the applicant's proposing to renovate and divide the existing 7,700 square foot restaurant building into a multi-tenant commercial building at the southeast corner of Ford and Lots Road, previously occupied by Haydens. Previous to that was the original Don Pablo's Restaurant. The Corporate Park Overlay District has certain restrictions on uses and requires the uses listed in Section 6.08 to be approved by special land use approval. The applicant is proposing to include general office, medical and dental, training and education centers, standard restaurant and bar with accessory drive-through windows, specialty retail, business and personal service establishments, and general retail uses in this building. So that would allow a large number of the uses that are listed in 6.08 to be considered within this particular building. The existing site would be modified by removing some parking in the rear, which would enlarge the green space a little bit to screen the trash enclosure into the southeast corner of the building. Add a pickup window and lane would be added to the east side of the building. The plan submitted as part of the special land use is conceptual. They'll come back through with a final site plan for site modifications at a later time if the special land use is approved. So Mr. Aiman is here tonight representing Alrigg, who's purchasing the building and making the application to modify the building and the site.
Thank you, Mr. Goulet. And project representative, do you have anything to say? And while he's coming up, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
We've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Engel at 7:05. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Aiman.
Evening, thank you. First, thank you, Mr. Goulet, for your review of that and the analysis. We are, I think, offering what should be a great advantage to those around, including the township. This building, which was a single user and obviously went dark, we're looking to essentially subdivide it with different users, which I think helps insulate the building from potentially being entirely dark. If one tenant goes dark, other tenants will be around. But because of this, it's the Corporate Overlay District, as Mr. Goulet indicated, those uses have to be particularly included as part of a special use. And we've included in there the use of this restaurant with a drive-through window in there. And essentially, it mirrors the logic of that, which is applied to the Kitty Corner Project where Starbucks is, as well as over there, because they have a drive-through window. It relates to that. Normally, you wouldn't be able to do that kind of a thing. But when it's an ancillary use of the site, in which this is by definition, by the percentage of usage, an ancillary use, we've made that request. And so that's part of the application. Otherwise, you'll be seeing, as Mr. Goulet pointed out, we've already filed for site plan approval. So potentially at the next or whatever, soon, pretty soon, you'll be seeing the detailed site plan. So as it relates to any concerns or questions as to, you know, buffers, or plants, or driveways, or parking, or whatever else like that, we'll be prepared to deal with those in detail when we come back to you on site plan. Conceptually, I think we provide a depiction that satisfies the concerns and hopefully will answer the necessary questions of that. Other than that, I'll be prepared to answer any questions you or any public might have regarding the project.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go to the audience and ask if there are any comments, questions, concerns from the audience? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Robert McCauslin, 1981 Lots Road. Can you explain to me what the detriment of a drive-through on this site would be?
Mr. Aiman can...
I'm asking you, Jeff. Not asking you.
Detriment?
He's asking for one. I'm asking you what a detriment on this site, a drive-through, could be.
You know, the parking on the site will be, you know, modified. There's plenty of room on the side of the building for a drive, you know, a pickup window and a stacking lane. They're not asking for a drive-through or a fast food restaurant. They're asking for you to accommodate a pickup window that's accessory to a standard bar or restaurant.
Excuse me? Accessory to what?
Restaurant. Most restaurants these days, regardless of whether...
Most restaurants have a drive-through window, Jeff. Let's call it what it is. To drive-through window. You could redefine it.
What's your point of the question?
I'm trying to understand, how come Canton can't accept normal development practices?
I don't understand what your question about "normal." This is not abnormal.
Anywhere else, this building would be approved without special land use. All these overlays and special uses and...
We are undergoing a special land use analysis tonight.
Why?
Because that is part of the legal description of the area.
This is why that area is undeveloped. Do you understand that?
That's not the point we're here for tonight.
Trying to get a point through.
I understand what you're trying to get at. That's something that you might want to take up with the township board, because obviously...
I felt this was my one and a half minutes to speak. If I'm incorrect...
Okay, go ahead and finish, please.
If I'm incorrect, you could correct me. It just seems that we go out of our way to get in front of the future. You know, most places that are going to accommodate that space are going to want to have a drive-through. All right? And it's obvious that the restaurant corner there didn't work. So I think it's a great use. It's fantastic use. Shouldn't, this should have never changed 20 years ago. We had that zoning there and it should have never changed. It did. It put us behind the eight ball. We're still thinking behind the eight ball. You know, these kind of buildings need that type of service, drive-through window, to be successful. If you don't want it to be successful, keep going the way you're in.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing at 7:10 by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're going to start with the commissioners. Commissioner Acharya?
Yes, I have one. Sir, to you, I have a question. Was your concern specific to this particular case? Or was it a general comment that you made? Is there anything that you find wrong in this particular case that you need to oppose? Or is it a comment?
No, I'm speaking on behalf of the whole area. If you're familiar with it, the Corporate Overlay District is from Cherry Hill to Warren Road in this area. So it's really a detriment to do development in that area. In other words, when somebody comes and wants to build a building like that, no, we can't do that. We can't do that from scratch today, because it doesn't meet the criteria. We have to wait till we have catastrophic failure in order to move forward. And it's just crazy. You know, this couldn't have been done 20 years ago on that site. 20 years ago. Where are we at today?
Thank you.
And Mr. Acharya, just to clarify, even without the overlay district, a fast food or drive-through restaurant would require special land use. So regardless of the overlay district, that use, even in standard C3 zoning, requires a special land use approval. They cannot apply... Let me clarify. Under the Corporate Park Overlay District, a fast food or drive-through restaurant cannot be considered. They are applying for a standard restaurant use as a special land use. It was a restaurant before, but they're turning it into a multi-tenant building, so they have to ask for all the uses that they're going to potentially place in this building. They're asking you for to accept, based on the conceptual plan, a convenience pickup window for a restaurant. They're not applying for a fast food restaurant or a drive-through restaurant. They're asking for an ancillary pickup window associated with a standard carryout or restaurant.
Excuse me, the public hearing is over.
Can I answer Jeff's question? I just want to make sure everybody hears me.
He didn't ask you the question. I'm sorry. Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Okay, so then for the drive-through, so this could be like the one that you have at Outback, where you just drive up and pick up your food? Or it could be like a McDonald's, either one then, right?
Right. Some of the restaurants have retrofitted and put a convenience pickup window. Sometimes they have, use a door on the side for a quick pickup, so people can run in and run out. But anymore, most restaurants want the convenience of a pickup window for online orders and pickup, so people don't have to go inside the building to pick it up.
So it could also even be a pharmacy. We have a lot of those now, correct?
Right, pharmacy, generally, that's part of a pharmacy thing. It doesn't meet the same standards as a drive-through restaurant. Usually, a drive-through or fast food restaurant is a restaurant where they, like McDonald's, which most of their business, 70, 75% of their business is drive-through or pickup. That's not the case in this particular application.
In the paper, it also said something about adding more greening also. You're going to, is that in the back there?
Right, since they're removing parking in certain areas, since they don't need as much parking, since it won't be a full-fledged restaurant, it'll be a multi-tenant center. You know, there's not as much parking demand. They'll be removing parking spaces in certain areas where they can. And they'll be adding more green space to increase the amount of foundation landscaping. So we haven't gone through the full site plan review yet, but, so that'll be addressed at site plan.
How many parking spaces then are you allowing?
Right now, they have about 100 spaces in the site. They, you know, with this use, they only need about 50, so...
All right, thanks.
Mr. Engel?
Are you using the existing building? You're starting all over.
Existing building and retrofitting and moving some things. And we're going to try to keep as much of it as possible. There will be, the rear wall will be moved and those kinds of things. But yeah, there'll be some changes, so...
Jeff, the parking that is there right now is enough for the potential or suggested uses in this special land use request?
They have way more, yeah. They have way more parking than they'll need.
They have way more?
Yeah.
Commissioner Zubor?
I don't have any specific questions. I do think that the exterior will look a lot better than it does now.
Thank you.
According to the elevations, so...
Commissioner Bennett?
My only question for the commissioners is Article 6.08 does not specifically allow any type of drive-through window. I guess I'm wondering how we all feel about that. So Article 6.08 in the zoning ordinance, it does not allow drive-through. It's not one of the allowed uses in the zoning ordinance for the special overlay district. So I'm wondering how we, you know, how we feel about that.
That's the basis for the request for special land use. It's permitted as a special land use.
Right. Thank you.
But that's the basis of the request.
Basically canvassing all of us to see, you know, how...
Well, the issue is, is the pickup window has to be ancillary to the restaurant use. It cannot be, by definition, be a fast food restaurant or a drive-through restaurant. So the pickup window would have to be accessory to the primary business as a standard restaurant or a carryout restaurant.
And just for clarification of our perspective on that, we literally were taking a site and we're requesting special land use on the site, which has these various use approvals we're seeking, one which is a drive-through on there. And so even if theoretically, since that portion of the site, we're talking like 1/3 of the building, not going to happen, but theoretically, if it were 100% drive-through on that site, it would still be 33% of the use of the site. So it'd still be ancillary by the site definition, whatever. The Starbucks, which is Kitty Corner, actually has about 66% of their business going through the drive-through. So it's, the majority of their business, but when you look at the entirety of the center and the site, it's a very small minority in ancillary use of the entirety of the site. So, but that, as it relates to, we wanted to equip the site, and so we made the request for the special uses for categories broad enough so that whatever happens in the future, based on economies and tendencies and whatever, that we have the ability to attract tenants of those types of uses, which your ordinance says are special uses. And so that's the basis of that request for the special use and the consideration in that, so yeah.
And I'm assuming that we're handling this question because, while I'm not going to ask you for a name, you have a specific client that has to have this need.
Well, we know it's certainly an attractive site. It's proximity to I-275. And as Mr. McCauslin pointed out, I mean, this entire area is, would be a natural fit for these kinds of uses. You know, we are a community, when you look just to the west on the freeway, there are some 24-hour uses, some restaurants and things, because we're technically along a freeway, even though we're more of a community bedroom, bedroom community along a freeway than, you know, some high interstate traffic or whatever like that. But being that near the freeway, it's not uncommon for having this kind of a use near this interchange, where you'd want to have a restaurant that has the ability to either serve through a window, because as people understand, a lot of people won't, they will just simply won't get out of the car and walk into a restaurant anymore. It just won't happen. And if there's not a drive-through, they're not stopping in. It's a use that should drive great daily business to the site and potentially support the other users on the site through whatever happens on other tendencies and whatever, so... And really, for the owner's perspective, it just allows them the greatest marketability of the set to prospective tenants. And that's what they're seeking to do, to make sure the tenant, the site doesn't go dark and it's economically supported for its entirety, so...
So it's not a specific that you're requesting? This is a general that you know that will...
Should fit a number of potential users, but if one shows up and then goes away, then we're... We feel the site would be equipped via your special use approval to address whatever the needs are, so that we wouldn't be looking at a full dark building in the future. We ought to be able to protect against that.
And answering your question, for me personally, I don't know everybody else, I have no issues with it.
I guess my main concern is setting a precedence. I understand that Starbucks has it, but we're looking at this right now. And that's my main concern, is setting precedents. If it's not, if it's not, you know, laid out in the zoning ordinance, well, you know, why am I here? If I'm, you know, that's why we're here, to follow the zoning ordinance, so...
Any other comments?
A question. Commissioner Bennett has mentioned about the Starbucks. Is Starbucks also 6.08?
Yeah, Starbucks basically came in, their business was about 40% drive-through, 60% walk-in, carryout. So they met the, you know, their drive-through wasn't the driver of them being there. They always want to drive through, just like any other coffee shop wants a pickup window. But when you're doing a special order drink, you know, that's not a high, you're not getting in and out in 30 seconds. You know, you're having to wait for them to make your drink. So only people who are diehards are going to sit in that line for a long period of time to pick up, you know, a cup, you know, a specialty coffee.
I resent that description.
Go with it, love it.
Then, well, I mean, Jeff, have we had any issues in Canton with drive-throughs at all, with high volume?
No, I mean, in these particular restaurants, where we've, you know, I think when Panera came in, they added a drive-through to Panera. Because of their volume, we made them go through a special land use for a drive-through restaurant. We had a hard time fitting that in just because that site was very constrained. This site is very ample, there's plenty of room for the lane and any kind of stacking on it. So that's one of the criteria you look at for special land use. When they bring in an individual tenant and we do zoning approval for that individual tenant, we'll have to get information from them on what the primary use is before we approve, you know, that pickup window use. As Brian says, it gives them the ability to market the space. They don't have a particular tenant in mind for that space right now, but it gives them the ability to market the space. They may come in and market it, and it may not be a restaurant at all.
Yeah.
You know, it may be another office use or it may be a retail use.
Drive-up legal services, I'm thinking.
Right, so, but it gives them the, you know, as a multi, you know, as Brian said, multi-tenant buildings, tenants come and go, sometimes on a yearly basis. And they just want the broadest ability to hit all of those uses that might go into that space.
And just to expand on that, you may recall I was recently here on the drive-through special land use for the Smoothie King. And the fact is, drive-throughs do present stacking, circulation issues that are unique. And they change the equation as it relates to parking spaces, flow and traffic and whatever. So that's why the township appropriately has in its area zoning a requirement that it wants to take a particular look at that. And I'll just answer, Commissioner, you're not only bound by your ordinances, but you're bound by your past practices. And so your application of this ordinance on the Starbucks certainly provides a precedent that we're looking at and relying upon and following that path of approval, so yeah.
I just have a question to clarify something Mr. Aiman said versus what Jeff said about the accessory use. Is it looking at the restaurant or the building?
The restaurant.
The restaurant, yeah.
Well, I would argue by your ordinance, it's essentially, we're asking special land use for the site. And even though it just doesn't happen, if this restaurant were theoretically 100% drive-through window, it would still only be 33% use of the entirety of the site that we're seeking the use approvals on. So just as Starbucks came in with the number, they ended up at a different number. Even though if Starbucks were 100% their service, they're one of four or five tenants on that site. And so it's still a very ancillary use to the entirety of the site, so anyway. But that's, Mr. Goulet and I can argue about that all day, and you know...
I bet you have.
So what would happen if, I mean, you have other tenants there? If a lot of traffic does go to that site to drive-through and it starts blocking people in, what do you do then?
Well, nothing's going to block things because the drive-through lane, there's no parking to that side of the building. And they've got an entire lane around the back of the building that would be free and clear. It's their loading area. There's no parking going to be on the north or the south side of the building or the east side of the building. So from a site standpoint, this one is actually very, very clean from a, you know, a stacking lane standpoint. I mean, nobody's going to block anybody in as part of a shopping center site. It's got circulation through the Home Depot site. It's got several accesses out into Lots Road. It's got several access points out onto Ford Road, so people can come and go whatever direction they, you know, they need to go on and off the site, so...
It also goes to the essence of why you do this exercise, because they and their special land use application process will require us to show that if we're requesting a drive-through, does the site work? As opposed to the concerns you raised, if they didn't ask the question, you could run into those kinds of problems. But they proactively make sure we engineer away from those and around those. And so that's the purpose of that exercise. It has your escape lane. I thought of that, yes.
Doesn't, because it's kind of, there's a...
Actually, they need to get rid of that median, so there is an escape lane, because right now, there's no escape, so...
Yeah, we're, you'll see the site plan, and we'll be dealing with that in the site plan, absolutely, yeah.
Any other comments from the commission? Make a motion, don't.
All right, I will make a motion. This is a long one. I move to recommend approval of the request for special land use for a multi-tenant building, which could include general office in 6.08.d.1, medical and dental clinics, 6.08.d.2, training and education centers, 6.08.d.11, standard bar/restaurant with accessory pickup window, 6.08.d.17, specialty retail business services and personal service establishments, 6.08.d.19, and general retail uses, 6.08.d.20 on parcel number 049-99-0001-704. The request meets a general criteria for a special land use approval in the Corporate Park Overlay District. The building and site can accommodate the proposed uses and renovation of the building and updates to the site will bring the parcel into closer conformance with the building, with the design guidelines of the district.
Support. Are you done?
Yes. Quite a performance, wasn't it?
Yes, yes. I missed part of that. Could you repeat the...
Sure, of course.
Never mind, never mind. We've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion on that motion? So I'm assuming that everybody's okay with the proposal, right? Going back to Bennett's.
I don't know.
Okay.
We'll find out when they vote.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
That's right.
Absolutely, absolutely. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sir, Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
And Chairman Green.
I'm okay with it, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Next step, Jeff, on this is...
To go to the township board. Yeah, the, yeah, special land use, go to the board, and then, once the board approves it, then they'll be back for the site plan modifications and exterior modifications.
Our next agenda item is the Michigan Fireworks Company II, where we're considering a seasonal sales permit for a property which is located north of Ford between, Ford Road between Canton Center and Sheldon. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, this is our season for seasonal sales permits. So the rest of the agenda, I think, is all seasonal sales permits. The first one is for the Knopkas. This is for Michigan fireworks sales. This is in the parking lot of Canton Landing near O'Reilly Auto Parts, located on north side of Ford Road between Canton Center and Sheldon. Essentially, this is the same fireworks tent that they've had for three years now, four years?
Right.
Yeah, four years. So this is essentially the same place, same, same layout, same exact location within the parking lot. They're near O'Reilly's and between McDonald's and O'Reilly's, and the parking lot just north of Ford Road. So we've got Erica's here to answer any questions you have. Last year, we had an issue relative to site maintenance. The landlords got the landscaping back up to snuff, so we don't have any outstanding code enforcement issues on that.
Jeff?
Hi. Who are you? Thank you for last year. It was successful. And if you guys remember, you, you passed, and I did help get the, the owners to update the landscaping, which I, to my surprise, I didn't think I had a chance, but we did, and thank you again. So everything went well, and I'd like to do it again, please. Really, ever have any issues. The police department, fire department are there, and they, they like us being there. We're, I think we, we have different clientele than most firework tents. We have the families there, and that's what we like, that sense of family.
All right.
Find us the muster sense.
And who is this with you?
Lucas. Tell who you are.
You wanna introduce yourself? Get on TV?
This is Lucas.
Hi, how are you? Welcome.
He runs our South Lion tent store.
Okay, all right. From the commission? Anybody have anything? We've done this before, so it's not new.
And basically, on this one, I think Eric, you're only using it for about two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah, so it's not up for the entire 30-day period.
Is there any way you can, you know, sell more silent fireworks?
Guess that every year.
So that my dogs don't go crazy, you know?
They, they, you see, they have, they have dog-friendly ones. They have eco-friendly, where they pour powder instead of chemical.
Oh, okay.
Very unique stuff.
All right. Any discussion, motions, anything?
Like Jeff said, we got rid of, I mean, the issues were resolved, like we said last year, and...
Yeah, and that's good.
Yeah, Eric will need to apply to the billing department for, for a tent erection permit, and for any sign permits that he uses on the tent, so.
Edit this. I move to approve one 30-day seasonal sales permit for the Michigan Fireworks Company, parcel number 039-99-0025-001, commencing on June 20th, 2019, subject to obtaining appropriate permits from building for erection of the tent and compliance with all, with all sign regulations.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Bennett, would you call the, the vote, please? I mean, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Our next agenda item is Home Depot on Ford Road, where we're considering a seasonal sales permit for this property. This is Ford Road, east of Lots. Jeff, could you give us a description of that?
Yes, again, this is a, another repeat from last year. Home Depot's been in for the last three or four years since we've had the seasonal sales permit. They're asking for two 30-day seasonal sales permits, running back-to-back, starting from May 1st through June 29th of this year. Just to give background on the site, the original, the site has special land use for the Garden Center, so this would be an area outside of the Garden Center and right adjacent to the Garden Center, as shown on the site plan. The proposal is to place three 6x10 tables and two racks for display and sale of live goods, and use of 12 parking spaces in the west side of the Garden Center for pallets of mulch and topsoil. This is basically for ease of customer pickup, so they're not dragging it all the way from the back end of the, of the Garden Center. So this is a very limited time period during their heavy garden season. Compliance permit may be required from Building Services, placement to the, placement of the tables or racks to ensure compliance with the plan, and the permit period commences on the day the tables and materials are placed. So as you say, this runs from, would run from May 1st through June 29th of this year, if approved.
Thank you, Jeff.
Representative from Home Depot, so, the Ford Road store manager here, so.
It's a, it's pretty cut and dried. We've, again, we've done this before. Any discussion on this? I, I don't go to that Home Depot, so I can't really comment on, you know, whether or not there were any problems.
I was there yesterday. No problems?
No problems.
Sorry, this is not a public hearing.
Yeah, this isn't a public hearing, yeah.
No discussion.
Pardon?
There's no discussion.
There's no discussion, no. Not from the public. There's a discussion up here.
It's not a public hearing, so. It's up to you on whether you wanna take comments, so.
Light up, sir. Please make it brief.
My name's Daniel McCausland, 2011 Lots Road. I would just like to read this into the record. By allowing a seasonal sales permit, Canton Township is allowing the activities that are zoning ordinance violations, subject to criminal actions in the courts. Canton Township receives the proceeds from the sales of the permits. Not all businesses are offered such relief and are still subject to the penalties of the zoning code, which makes this practice neither fair, equitable, and thus making it discriminatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Yes. I move to approve two 30-day seasonal sales permits for Home Depot on Ford Road, parcel number 049-99-0001-718, commencing on May 1st, 2019, and ending on June 29th, 2019, for the sale of live goods, mulch, and topsoil, as shown on the plan.
Support. Hey, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
That's a yes. Okay, our next agenda item is very similar. It's the Home Depot on Michigan Avenue, where we're considering a seasonal sales permit for them. This property is located north of Michigan Avenue and west of Canton Center. Jeff, could you give more detail?
Yes, this is a request for seasonal sales permit for Home Depot on Michigan Avenue. Again, the proposal is to place three 6x10 tables, several racks for display and sale of live goods outside the, outside the existing Garden Center enclosure, eight parking spaces in the west to be used for mulch, topsoil, and sod, plus an A-frame plant display at the front entrance. This is the same request, but approved by the planning commission last year. We experienced no issues with compliance with the, the plan as, as, as presented to you today.
Again, this is pretty, pretty much like the first one. I, I have to say, I do, I do frequent the Michigan Avenue Home Depot, and when they're, they have their outside sales, I've seen no problems. I've seen nothing that, that concerned me. I will say that they're, they're, I will always harp on this. Behind the building, however, I know they, they have a lot of stock that they have come in, but they need to make sure that, in a timely fashion, they get that stock into their building.
We'll have, we'll have code enforcement check it out, and so, I think Donna, I think Donna is the new manager there, so. Are you the Michigan Avenue? You wanna go to the podium, so?
Up.
Hello, my name is Chris Calendar, so I'm the operations manager for the, the Home Depot here. Donna Hines is the store manager, and her and I both just transferred over here from different locations this season. So the ordinance and the requirements you have is a little bit different than we're used to, but we're both completely on board, and I will tell you that if you don't see a big change this season, I'd be very, very surprised behind the building. We're very strict behind the building now, so hopefully, what you're bringing up will be corrected.
Okay, yeah. You know where, where I'm talking?
100%.
Around the back there, yeah, yeah. Because I use that, that coming in off of Canton Center. I don't go in the front of the building, I go around behind, so I'm always seeing that when I go to Home Depot.
The sign that says, the, the sign that says trucks only?
Uh, that's not, there's no sign there for that.
No, you took it down?
You're thinking, and it, and it's not, it's not a legal sign anyway.
Just going the other way.
It's not a legal sign, no. That's what those are designed for.
Chris, what was your last name?
My last name is Calendar.
Calendar, okay.
Other, otherwise, the, what, what I have, again, what I have seen in the past, when we've gone in the Garden Center and whatnot, things run very, very smoothly. I haven't seen, you know, anything out of place or blocking traffic or anything like that, so.
I have a comment, though.
Yes.
I was there last week and, and was quite surprised at the, I guess, on this plan, at least, I know that the actual building is on a skew, but, on an angle, but on the,